Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, we have a special announcement from our district translator, Ms. Paula Valbuena.
Thank you, President Lopez. Buenas tardes. Habla Paula Valbuena. Si necesita servicios de interpretación al español, por favor llame el 1805-324-7680 e ingrese el código de acceso 334033625 más la tecla numeral. Este es un número totalmente gratis. Nuevamente, llame el número de teléfono 1805-324-7680 e ingrese el código de acceso 334033625 más la tecla numeral. También puede acceder a estas instrucciones en nuestro sitio web en mcs4kids.com dirigiéndose a la parte inferior de la página haciendo clic en Quick Links y haciendo clic en Board Edyendas para ir a la agenda de esta noche. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone, to the Modesto City Schools' 1,481st Regular Board Meeting of September 6, 2002. This... 2022, sorry. I hope a lot of us were wishing we'd go back 20 years. This meeting is not called to order. In closed session, Board gave direction to legal counsel. And at this moment, I'll take roll call. Student Board Rep. Dara Patel.
Here.
Trustee Irvin.
Present.
Joining us from teams, Trustee Maestas.
Present.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Trustee Mejia.
Present.
Trustee Wes.
Here.
Vice President Brown.
I'm here.
And President Lopez here as well. Would you... Everyone, please join me in standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. This open session meeting of the Board of Trustees is being livestreamed. At the direction of the Board, the livestream is available on the district website and the recordings will be available for viewing the day after the board meeting. Modesto City Schools' board meetings have been adjusted to follow health and safety precautions until further notice. MCS has provided an opportunity for the public to provide comment. Is outlined on the agenda. The public has been given an opportunity to call and leave a voicemail, send us a comment via email, or appear in person before the Board. Any public comment received via email or voicemail prior to the noon of the day of the board meeting will not be read aloud, but have been transcribed and printed copies have been provided to each board member and there's also copies available for the public out in the lobby. The voice and email public comments will be attached to future board meetings for approval. This practice will continue until further notice. For members of the public that are interested in commenting in the future, we welcome your comments. And if you wish to address the Board during the period for public comment this evening on an item that is not on the agenda, you must complete a public presentation request card, such as this one, prior to the begin... the beginning of the period for public comment. If you need a translator when you come up to give your comment, please indicate that on the card. And once you are done filling out your card, please take it to the back to Ms. Antoinette, which we're receiving them. Please do so early because once we get started with the public presentations, we will not accept any other cards. Okay? And I also want to remind everyone that if you wish to make a complaint, again, any specific district employee, you should follow the district personnel complaint procedures. Copies of that procedure are available in the lobby as well and the... as are the agenda's copies with the outlined procedures will... which will reserve during the period for public comment. And the right to address the Board does not exempt any speaker from any potential liability for defamation. Okay? And so this evening, this evening, we're pleased to be joined by two students from Twalome...
President Lopez. President Lopez. It looks like our students have gotten detained. So at this time, why don't we go to the recognition section? And if they show up after the recognition section, then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I wouldn't want to do the Pledge of Allegiance and they walk in two minutes late. So I think we're just going to switch a little bit. And so let's go to our recognition and then we will loop back around to our two students from Twalome.
Thank you. Would you like to... Would you like to do the recognitions or would you like to do your welcome and announcements?
You know, I'll do my welcome and then we'll do... we'll do the recognitions. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
You have the floor.
Well, good evening, everyone. It looks like we're, you know, a little bit of flexibility, but I don't want students out there sitting at a light right now and be just two minutes late and then be late for a great night here. I'm doing the pledges. So first off, thank you all for coming tonight and those that are online again. It's always great to see folks participate and engage in school board meetings, which is fundamental to how we run our school district. This board meeting, to me, this board meeting is a great meeting because we have planned an opportunity to be able to take a look at student achievement. Student achievement in the area of our elementary schools. And as you know, last year was a fairly challenging school year, but I am pleased to say that there is some good news to report. It's not exactly where we want to be, but it certainly shows growth in the majority of our schools, like 85% of our schools in elementary. And so I think that that's a story that we want to tell. Again, is it where we want to be? The answer is no, but it certainly gives us a lot to learn from as we go forward in this year and try to duplicate what we did last year. You know, something to consider and think about as the team presents this information is last year, we had 625,000. That's 625-000 days of absences. So would you think that would make an effect on student achievement? The answer is yes. However, I think that one of the reasons why I'm excited about this report is it shows that we have some growth and we'll build on that in the elementary level. Something that we have learned as a team, not only cabinet but principals as well, is we look back on why did we have the growth that we did, right? What contributing factors led to that? And I really believe it was the support of the Board that approved $22 million worth of supports and services added to our elementary schools last year. So I thank the Board for their support for increasing time in learning before school, during school, and after school, and also a very robust summer. This last summer doesn't count, but the summer before was even more robust than it was before. So I really look forward to next year and we reap the benefits of this last summer. So, you know, we know that engaging students in teaching and learning, that's going to have an effect. We also know that supporting our students social emotionally and addressing their incredible needs that they had last year, all of which we provided support. So thank the Board, the teachers, the administrators, parents for really kind of sticking through last year and allowing us to show some growth and be able to move forward. The last thing I want to say, because I know the board members are going to be talking about back-to-school nights, so I'll save a little bit of time on that, is I do want to take just a moment to give a heartfelt condolence to family, friends, and coworkers of Cory Helseth. Cory passed away a few weeks ago and many of members of the Modesto City family went to his services last week. Cory was hired as a custodian at Modesto High in 1996 and through hard work and determination and exemplary leadership, Cory rose to became a Director One in Maintenance and Operations. His commitment to his students and staff, to our students and staff, his uncanny ability to resolve challenging situations, and of course, his sense of humor will be missed by all. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to President Lopez, who is going to turn it over to Ms. Jackson.
Yes. At this moment, we will show our recognition to the great individuals of our district. You know, there's too many to recognize in one sitting, but we have a couple for us tonight and so we'll send it over to Ms. Brittany.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Trustees, Superintendent Naguchi, and our MCS families and community here tonight. Thank you for attending tonight's board meeting. We always enjoy this portion of our board meeting as we recognize students and staff for going above and beyond for our school district. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge on tonight's Board of Education consent agenda, a proclamation declaring September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month. This observance celebrates the histories, cultures, contributions, and traditions of Hispanic and Latino communities. The theme this year is inclusivity for a stronger nation. Now for our recognitions. Tonight, we are celebrating Elliott Alternative Education Center's 12th grade student, Miguel Luna Rodriguez, for the character trait Responsibility. Assistant Principal Cynthia Langle nominated Miguel and she is here tonight to read the nomination. Following the reading, we will have Superintendent Dr. Naguchi and one of our trustees come down and gather for a photo to my immediate left or my immediate right. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Principal, Assistant Principal Cynthia Langle.
Good evening. Unfortunately, Miguel's not here, but I would still like to read his nomination. It was my honor to nominate Miguel Luna for the MCS Character Trait Award. Miguel exhibits the MCS character trait of responsibility for showing the ability to use good judgment, act responsibly, and make sound independent decisions. On the morning of August 8th, Miguel was on his way to Elliott and witnessed a toddler wearing only a diaper walking outside unattended. When Miguel went over to the toddler, the toddler put his arms out in a gesture to be picked up. Miguel showed compassion to the young boy, picked him up, and brought him to Elliott. The toddler's distraught mother was located a short time later and was reunited with her son. The parent was grateful to Miguel for making sure her son was safe and cared for. Miguel went above and beyond demonstrating responsibility and compassion and should be commended for his actions. Thank you.
So at this time, Cynthia, if Dr. Naguchi and one of our board trustees will come down and take a photo with Cynthia.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next, we will celebrate our MCS hero. Tonight, we are celebrating Downey High School Career Technical Business Teacher, Tara Coleman. District Office CTE Coordinator Cheryl Limbaugh is here tonight to read the nomination. Welcome, Cheryl, to the front.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cheryl Limbaugh and I am the new CTE Coordinator for Career Technical Education. I'm kind of standing in for Rachel Barkus tonight. I would like to introduce our hometown hero, Mrs. Coleman. Come on up here. She is a teacher, a business teacher at Downey High School and she is also the Future Business Leaders of America Club Advisor, which she actually started just one year ago. And she... Her students, her FBLA club students, wanted to start a community service project. And so they decided and discussed lots of different options and they really wanted to do something that would affect the neediest of students at Downey High School, their peers. And so working with a liaison to ensure privacy between the students, the... There were 10 homeless students, correct? That were identified that attend Downey High School and they... The club members said, "We want to help more than just 10." So the liaison also identified an additional 10 low-income students at Downey High School that attend the school. And so this... The club members then rallied and developed flyers, developed a business plan, a little bit of a marketing plan, and set about fundraising and raised almost $5,000 in a matter of a couple of weeks. They worked with a liaison, developed a form for the students and asked them what their needs were and their wants. And then they... Once the money came in, they went out shopping. And they did all of this as a community service project for the students in need. And at the same time, their state convention was coming up and they represented this project at their state convention. And the organization Lead for Change also wanted to recognize their community service project and gave them a $10,000 donation. And the club members at Downey decided half of that money should go to the Center for Human Services and the remaining $5,000 is going to stay at Downey to help other students in need. And so this, I'd like to introduce, this is Mrs. Coleman. She is our hometown hero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next, we will celebrate our MCS hero. Tonight, we are celebrating Downey High School Career Technical Business Teacher, Tara Coleman. District Office CTE Coordinator Cheryl Limbaugh is here tonight to read the nomination. Welcome, Cheryl, to the front.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cheryl Limbaugh and I am the new CTE Coordinator for Career Technical Education. I'm kind of standing in for Rachel Barkus tonight. I would like to introduce our hometown hero, Mrs. Coleman. Come on up here. She is a teacher, a business teacher at Downey High School and she is also the Future Business Leaders of America Club Advisor, which she actually started just one year ago. And she... Her students, her FBLA club students, wanted to start a community service project. And so they decided and discussed lots of different options and they really wanted to do something that would affect the neediest of students at Downey High School, their peers. And so working with a liaison to ensure privacy between the students, the... There were 10 homeless students, correct? That were identified that attend Downey High School and they... The club members said, "We want to help more than just 10." So the liaison also identified an additional 10 low-income students at Downey High School that attend the school. And so this... The club members then rallied and developed flyers, developed a business plan, a little bit of a marketing plan, and set about fundraising and raised almost $5,000 in a matter of a couple of weeks. They worked with a liaison, developed a form for the students and asked them what their needs were and their wants. And then they... Once the money came in, they went out shopping. And they did all of this as a community service project for the students in need. And at the same time, their state convention was coming up and they represented this project at their state convention. And the organization Lead for Change also wanted to recognize their community service project and gave them a $10,000 donation. And the club members at Downey decided half of that money should go to the Center for Human Services and the remaining $5,000 is going to stay at Downey to help other students in need. And so this, I'd like to introduce, this is Mrs. Coleman. She is our hometown hero.
Congratulations, Tara. So at this time, we'll have Dr. Naguchi and one of our board trustees come down and take a photo with Tara. Thank you and congratulations again, Tara. Next, we have a special recognition from the Turlock Irrigation District. I would like to invite Business Services Associate Superintendent Tim Zerly up to welcome representatives from TID to share more about the Powering Our Communities Grant. Following the presentation, we will have Board of Education and Superintendent Naguchi come down for a photo.
Thank you, Brittany. Yes, we are pleased tonight to have a longstanding partner in our district, Turlock Irrigation District, and now a partner with us at Twalome Elementary School. They've provided us a grant under the Powering Our Communities Grant of $68,281 that will go towards the construction of our sustainable outdoor learning environment at Twalome Elementary School and that will begin October 3rd. So we're pleased to have Monique Hampton with us from Turlock Irrigation District, who can speak on the grant, the Powering Our Communities Grant, and the relationship now that we have with the utility company.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening. So just a little background on our Powering Our Community Grant. So how this grant is funded? Every utility rate payer pays a public benefits charge on their utility bill and it's 2.85% of your bill. And so that is a state mandated charge and we are required to spend on specific expenditures, being energy efficiency, renewable energy, our low-income programs, and research, development, and demonstration. And so we have wonderful low-income programs and we have energy efficiency rebates. And we thought, you know, what's a better way to get out to our customers? Let's develop a grant program. Hopefully, we can partner with our... We reached out to our government agencies and our school districts and we've created this three-year grant program and we started in 2021. And so, yeah, we were this next year, 2023, about last year to do it, but Modesto City Schools submitted for the sole project, which fit many of our categories. It's for the Twalome Elementary School. It's a renewable project and it's got some energy efficiency components to it. So it was just a very well-fit for us and so we were happy to be able to grant that $68,000 to Modesto City Schools.
Thank you.
Much. At this time, we'll have our trustees and Dr. Naguchi come down.
Right. I'd like to invite Trustee Mejia for the Twalome and Trustee Maestas for related sustainability energy piece.
Thank you so much and that concludes tonight's recognitions.
Thank you very much. Before we continue, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Unfortunately, our students can't make it this evening. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you very much. This leads us to our board member reports. Do I have any lights for this evening? We'll start with Dr. Wes.
Thank you. I was able to attend the back-to-school night for La Loma Junior High School and I had the opportunity to attend with Ms. Jackson and we had a great time with Principal Hurtado and all of the other wonderful leadership and teachers that are at that school. The students were very excited, our parent ambassadors. We walked past their table and, boy, they had so much energy. They were just bubbling over with excitement for the program on that campus. We were able to visit some classrooms and saw some wonderful teaching and so it was a great opportunity to be on campus for the back-to-school night for La Loma.
Thank you very much. Trustee Maestas?
Yeah, I have a feeling we're all going to share about our back-to-school night adventures here. I had the opportunity to attend back-to-school night at Bayer High School and I learned a lot about the high school that I didn't know before. There's... There were a lot of parents there, a lot of enthusiasm, a nice screen, a nice neat screen in the gym now. And something I didn't know that I was really interested in being that my son's going to high school next year. I can't believe it, next year. They have an MJC dual-enrollment program within their seven-day periods, which was its amazing opportunity for kids to get college credit and their high school credit at the same time, in the same class, within the school day. So very, very cool opportunity there. And so just a lot of great things going on at Bayer High School. It was... It was just great to be there and see all the parents that were coming to learn about this year. And like I said, a really great energy about what's going on and coming into this year. So I'm pretty excited.
Thank you very much. Trustee Marks?
Thank you. I... I've attended a couple of meetings besides the open houses, but I attended the CalSSD meeting and we learned that 700 bills the legislature put forward, 75% of them moved forward. So we'll see how many of those end up becoming law, but it sounds like a lot of them will. And we also learned that there's a lot of art and music grants that will help our school districts. And then because of the lobbying, there was an increase in special education funding and similar types of information. I also attended the regional meeting for Delegate Assembly with CSBA. Don't always get choked up over that stuff, but tonight I am. Anyway, also, it was a great group that met. Not very many of us, but it was a good small group of discussion with CSBA and with other members around the area. I attended the Fremont Open House. It was really great to go there. It was a huge packed house. Ms. Jackson came and Mr. Goodoe. And it was the most parents I've ever seen at one of the open houses, especially for Title I. And then we all got to go around and visit the classrooms and that was so fun to see the teachers and the parents and the families in the classroom. And then I also attended Gregori High School. We have a new principal out there, Mr. Phil Armeno, and he was great. He used to be a VP there and he just was so excited and he has new staff there and he wore a Jag tie that he had from before and it was a cool-looking Jag tie. I... Anyway, it was perfect. And he just was excited, enthusiastic, and it just was infection. It infected your attitude at the meeting. Lots of parents attended and then going into the classrooms. I also learned about their college night and all the grants that are available for parents to be able to have access to this next year. And so they did a great job explaining all that. I guess I'm echoing now, too. Okay? But anyway, it's been a great, great couple of weeks and going to all these meetings and being back to school.
Thank you very much. Vice President Brown?
Yes, I was able to attend the ENOC's back-to-school night and it was great to see that gym packed and lots of dedicated parents there to check out what's happening on the campus. A lot of new administrators at that school and a great thing was that everything ran smoothly as though they had been there forever. So kudos to that group. I was there with Mr. Zerly and Mr. Worth and a lot of recollection back. My daughter graduated there in 2013 and it feels like yesterday. So, you know, when you walk onto what you think is a brand-new campus, you know, still realizing that there's quite a few years that have passed and as we move into this bond measure, there are needs at every one of our schools. And good to see students engaged, good to see parents engaged and staff and all the teachers there, ready to welcome families and just make sure that this was an excellent school year. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Irvin?
Yes. I would like to report, I went to both Beard Elementary and Everett Elementary and those two schools hosted outstanding back-to-school nights. While at Beard, I was in the meeting with the parents. That was standing room only at both campuses. At Beard, they were going over data and we're probably going to hear this later on from about the data, but I was just so impressed that this data was passed on to the from about the data, but I was just so impressed that this data was passed on to the parents and explained, you know, Beard had a 10.7% math growth and a 12.3% ELA growth from last year. So I thought that was outstanding, and even more outstanding that the parents got a chance to, to hear this information and be shared the information about the growth there. Had a chance to eat, both, both sites hosted taco trucks, you know, and I got full that night, eating at both campuses. So again, outstanding job by our staff at both Beard and Everett. It was really great to be there for back-to-school.
Thank you very much. For me, I'll just keep it brief, I was able to, to attend the back-to-school night at Modesto High with Mr. Godot, it was, and Principal Manning. It was a great experience. We saw a couple of parent, we saw parents there, they were engaged, they wanted to know more about their, about their students, and just overall, just being able to talk to the teachers and the excitement and just the positive comments we received around this year and getting, getting back, getting back to school. I mean, we know this is our second year coming back to in-person, but this is the first year where they felt that it's really, you know, back to what they all said, a new normal, right? But where they felt, and they felt everything ran very smoothly. So a lot of kudos to all the staff members that make that possible, so that everyone, from students to parents to teachers, have a positive experience. With that being said, we'll be moving on to A8, which is our approval for consent agenda. Is there any comments regarding our consent agenda for this evening? Hearing, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Trustee West, seconded by Trustee Mejia. We'll take a roll call. Student Rep. Patel? Trustee Irvin? Okay. Trustee Irvin, did you have an I or an A? You're muted. Okay, we'll take that as an I.
As an I.
Thanks. Trustee Maestas?
Aye.
Trustee Marks?
Aye.
Trustee Mejia?
Aye.
Trustee West?
Aye.
Vice President Brown?
I want to make sure.
Aye.
President Lopez, aye as well. Motion carries unanimously. Now we move on to approval of order of discussion and action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the order of discussion and action items for this evening? Moved by Trustee Mejia, seconded by Trustee Maestas. I will once again, and for the remainder of the evening, because we have someone on teams, we all have to do a roll call vote. Student Rep. Patel?
Aye.
Trustee Irvin? Trustee Maestas?
Aye.
Trustee Marks?
Aye.
Trustee Mejia?
Aye.
Trustee West?
Aye.
Vice President Brown?
Aye.
President Lopez, aye as well. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. And this takes us to our period for public presentation. Thank you for attending tonight's meetings and showing your interest in our schools. And as of right now, I have three cards tonight, and I ask each speaker to come to the podium and address the board. Each speaker has three minutes for a total of 30 minutes for public comment. The first person I have, and I, and I apologize if I've missed, if I don't say your name correctly, Jessica Von Vilt.
Okay.
Yeah, I see that.
It's Jessica Van Vilt, but that's okay. Greetings. Can I start?
Yes.
Sorry, just go for it? Sorry, it's my first time. Okay. So I am actually just going to be reading from the current health education book in our schools today, as a health education teacher. So, first part. It is not unusual for some teens to be unsure or confused about their sexual orientation. At times, some teens who are heterosexual feel romantic or sexual attraction to people of the same gender. This does not necessarily mean that they are non-heterosexual. For example, a girl might develop a crush on another girl in her school or on a female celebrity. This type of sexual curiosity is fairly common, while adolescents are maturing and is due, and is due in part to increased hormone levels. In time, most teens sort out their feelings and understand their sexual orientation. I'm going to proceed by listing off the gender identities in our current school health book. Agender, androgynous, bigender, cisgender, gender fluid, gender non-conforming, gender questioning, non-binary, transgender. I will also list off the sexual and romantic orientations in our health book. Heterosexual, homosexual, androsexual, gynosexual, bisexual, polysexual, sciliosexual, pansexual, demisexual, and asexual. I will also proceed to list off the romantic orientations, such as hetero-romantic, homo-romantic, andro-romantic, jirno-romantic, can't say it every time, bi-romantic, poly-romantic, scilio-romantic, pan-romantic, demi-romantic, and a-romantic. I am merely here to make the board very aware of what they have approved in our school curriculum, specifically with health education. Like I said earlier, I am actually a sexual health education teacher here in the Modesto area. I can speak for many parents who choose to opt out of vital health education because of these political components, such as this and many others, such as Plan B and so on. It is unfortunate. Since there is a lot of important information when it comes to relationships and certain things like that, I personally get absolute joy in teaching the kids about monogamy and really reaching their ultimate success and goals, which is through abstinence and the like. But that is not educated, that is not taught, nor is marriage. I'm disappointed by this information, and I would like this book to be amended and/or removed from our schools. And that's all I have to say. Thank you guys so much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Arne Conrad?
It's just Arnie, it's just Arnie. Good evening, board and members of the audience tonight. My name is Arne Conrad, and I am a resident of Modesto. Three of my students, three of my children have graduated from Modesto High Schools. And I'm here tonight to donate, in the name of the children, 50 copies of the Ingabi Trust poster to the students of Modesto City Schools. I think individually, most people do decide one way or the other about whether they believe in God or not. Do countries make that kind of decision also? I would say for America, we do. For 400 years now, Americans have recognized that government has a connection to divine providence. In 1620, when the pilgrims came here, back in the days when I still went to school, we were taught that the pilgrims came here for religious freedom and freedom of worship. The opening words of the Mayflower Compact say, "In the name of God, amen." In the Declaration of Independence, we read about the laws of nature and of nature's God. We also read that we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights. Americans have always believed that their rights come from our Creator. In the War of 1812, the Battle of Fort McHenry, the Star Spangled Banner was written as a result of that event, and the fourth stanza of the Star Spangled Banner says, "Then fight on we must, when our cause it is just, and this be our motto, in God is our trust." That national, that, that song, the Star Spangled Banner, became our national anthem, excuse me, in 1931. And I will point out, it's not a national song, and anthem is a sacred piece of music. And in 1956, we adopted Ingabi Trust as our national motto. Were public schools intended to be family-friendly, faith-friendly places? I think that they were. I think any student who can be helped to feel comfortable expressing, living, and practicing their faith, by and large, is going to be a better behaved student, by and large, is going to be a better student. Would parents benefit from seeing an Ingabi Trust poster in the front office of their school? Would students benefit from seeing a poster like that in their libraries or in their classrooms? I really do believe that they would. If you want to close the achievement gap, one way to do that is to encourage the spiritual lives of your students, because people who have a faith tend to, that's the operative word, tend to be willing to be a little more helpful to others. I would like tonight to donate 50 copies of the Ingabi Trust poster to the students of the district. I will drop them off in the back. I would urge the board or the superintendent to put a communication out, if they can, that these posters are available. If demand outweighs supply, I will bring more. Thank you, good night, and may God bless the United States of America.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker for this evening is Celeste Mendez?
On August 12th, a coach, my daughter's coach, decided to put two fingers on her bottom and pull out her wedgie. I'm here to share how this has impacted my daughter in a negative way. My daughter has lost water polo, she has lost long-term friendships that she has made because of this. She has been diagnosed with depression. And it's so hard to see her, I'm taking her to school, that there's been days where she has to go to school crying, and I can't take her to school, I have to take her back home so she can cope with these feelings that she's had. It was, she struggles with the idea of an authoritative person violating her body and violating her rights. And she's triggered every time she has to see her friends and staff, faculty, ask her why she's had to quit water polo. She's triggered every time she has to see the coach. She said this, quote, "The worst part is that I have to continue to lie to my friends and staff, that I'm not able to speak out and make sure that this isn't done to anyone else. I leave you guys your motto." Modesto City Schools' motto is, "Every student matters, every moment counts." Will my daughter's voice continue to be silenced? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Again, although we cannot engage in discussion or take formal action on items that are not on the agenda, we thank you for following our protocols and addressing the board and for taking the time to share our views with us this evening. And this takes us to our next, our next item, which is B1, Student Representative to the Board Report. Student Rep. Patel, do you have any reports for this, at this time?
I do, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all having a great day on what is said to be the hottest day of the year. Boy, am I grateful for air conditioning today, it's been really, really hot. These past couple of weeks, though they've been hot, have been really busy, and what once seemed like the impossible to get through has now felt like normalcy. I see myself and other students getting adjusted to the new schedule, though there's longer minutes and the days longer, we're slowly getting adjusted and feeling like it's normal. And for personal experience, I've been getting used to the new schedule, and though I'm not used to the traffic after school, it's, it's been getting better. I'm so glad I've been able to meet such wonderful people here helping me adjust to my new role. I was recently able to attend the CSBA Student Representative Conference, where I was able to learn a great deal about the roles and responsibilities of the student representative, effective communication strategies with my peers, and the Brown Act. I was also able to understand the differences between regular, special, and emergency board meetings, the laws and logistics of the board, and was also able to hear other student representatives' perspectives and ideas from all over California. So I think this was a really unique and helpful experience, and it was really informative. So I was really glad I was able to attend. The first graduation committee meeting was also held a couple of weeks ago, and I have to say, I was really impressed with the diverse perspectives and voices in the room. There were teachers, staffs, counselors, administrators, parent ambassadors, and students that came together to participate in healthy discussion about our MCS graduation requirements, sharing what we noticed about our graduation requirements when we compared them to other districts, and what we thought would be beneficial for students. So I think it was a really good start to these graduation requirement meetings, and I'm looking forward to attending more of them and providing a formal recommendation in April. And it took some time to figure out the logistics of the inter-high schedule, so we haven't had a meeting just yet, but I am glad to say that I recently met with Mrs. Amanda Moore, and we have scheduled a meeting, our first inter-high meeting, for September 13th next week on Tuesday, and our inter-high meetings will be held every second Tuesday of the month. So I'm excited to work on inter-high and be able to work with all the other students from the other high schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for that report. We'll be moving on to B2, this is California School Employee Association Report. Is the president or vice president here this evening? No, I see none, I don't see them here. We'll be moving on to B3, which is the report on TK6 Student Reports, Student Supports. Mr. Herbst?
Yeah, good evening. Really, really excited about this board report. Tonight, you're going to hear really the district's efforts in developing a multi-tiered that crossed many multi-divisions in an effort and supports that we put into our elementary schools last year. The board's going to hear information on how the district not only strengthened the intervention programs we run, but the good, solid instruction that our kids received each and every day. You're also going to hear about our district's MTSS model, Multi-Tierred System of Support at the elementary level, as well as the benefits and some of the data that came through with our offerings before and after school. So this one is a combined effort. I believe we have Director Hinkle, Calderon, Mota, Olson, and Lamelli here to do this presentation.
All right. Good evening, Board President Lopez, Trustee Superintendent Dr. Naguchi, Cabinet Anne Guest. My name is Danielle Hinkle, Senior Director of Student Support Services. As mentioned, presenting with me this evening are Student Support Services Director Toni Lamelli, and Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development Directors Ernesto Calderon and Dr. Sarah Olson. Maristella will make a appearance in the next presentation, so she's here as well. I wanted to start, before I get into the meat of the presentation, just by echoing the sentiments of Dr. Naguchi at the start of this board meeting, where later, you will be seeing some of our elementary student achievement data. And we are incredibly excited about the gains that were made in English Language Arts and Mathematics, but as we all know, it's not all English Language Arts and Mathematics. And we had a number of supports that we feel really contributed to the success of students who were coming out of the pandemic, getting back to a sense of normalcy, as we've heard several times this evening. So in this presentation, we're going to be highlighting all of these, a number of these supports, including Multi-Tierred System of Supports, MTSS, Social Emotional Learning, SEL, our before and after-school programs, and the support provided to our staff members, both certificated and classified, in the areas of professional development and coaching. Okay, well, that wasn't the right way to go. Uh, need to get back to the other presentation, which was the supports. No, it's the, it's the other presentation titled, "We Were There" on the first slide, and then when I advanced, it went to this presentation. Oh, no worries. Not that one. That slide is correct. The next one should be a goal slide, about the district goals. Okay. Do we think, okay, we'll, we'll hope that this works. All right. All of the work in these support areas are in direct alignment with District Goal 1, which is increasing academic achievement for students to be college and career-ready. Additionally, District Goal 2... which is centered around high-quality professional development and instructional coaching for our staff members. All right. So the first area, and one that is near and dear to my heart, that strengthens, strengthens student success is that of our Multi-Tierred System of Support in the area of academics and behavior. With reading specifically, in addition to all students receiving Core Instruction or Tier 1 at our elementary levels, our schools also have an additional dedicated block of MTSS reading time. Our schools call it WIN, W-I-N, What I Need. During WIN time, our students receive Direct Instruction, or DI, Delivered Lessons, as students are in levelized reading groups. Students are grouped based on their reading placement tests with a goal of accelerating their reading fluency growth, especially for our most struggling learners. We're fortunate to have an MTSS instructional coach at all of our elementary sites, who not only manages the data analysis for student group placement, but also provides instructional coaching support for teachers and paraprofessionals to ensure fidelity of delivery of the DI programs. In the area of behavior, our elementary sites utilize Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, or PBIS, and restorative practices as the Tier 1 instruction. With both PBIS and restorative practices, the goal is to create a culture of proactively teaching behavioral expectations to students. These programs also recognize students who are demonstrating success with behavior expectations. And of course, with our restorative practices, we're working to strengthen relationships, not only between students, but also between students and staff. For students who might need a higher level of behavior support on campus, not only do we utilize our Student Assistance Specialists and Family Support Specialists from the Center for Human Services, but we also have our Behavior Consultation Model clinicians who serve those students who need intensive assistance. The clinicians can provide consultation and training for staff and parents, again, with a goal of supporting students at the most intensive level in behavior modification for greater success in school. If we're thinking about data and measuring the effectiveness of our MTSS reading program, I'd like to share some data with you. Our, our true goal with MTSS in the area of reading is to support students who are not reading at grade level, those who are scoring at the below basic range in our DIBELS assessment. DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And while we do monitor the data at all of our elementary levels, our focus truly is at the K3 level where our students are learning to read. With the data, as mentioned, our goal is to decrease the percentage of students scoring at the below basic levels. So in our chart, if you look first at the kindergarten level, sixteen of our school sites out of twenty-two achieved the goal of moving a percentage of students out of the below basic ranges. Our kindergarten, for example, they grew by fourteen percent from beginning of year to end of year, meaning they moved that percentage of students out of the below basic levels. And this was an eighteen percent growth compared to the prior year. First grade grew thirteen percent, moving thirteen percent of the students out of the below basic ranges with a growth of nineteen percent compared to the prior year. Second grade grew nine percent, again, moving that percentage out of the below basic range. You'll see a blank there on the growth from the prior year, and that's just because we did not assess all second-grade students the year prior, but we are now assessing all students in the second-grade level. And third grade, again, grew by seven percent, moving seven percent of students out of the below basic range. So we're pretty proud of that, green across that whole entire chart. In the area of social emotional learning, again, this is an area where we felt like this was a tremendous support to our students returning to campus and, and having success and focusing on their academics. One of the SEL, or Social Emotional Learning, areas of success was with the Second Step Curriculum. This curriculum is used by teachers to deliver short lessons in the areas of growth mindset and goal setting, emotion management, empathy and kindness, and problem solving. We do have our elementary prep providers who support students in learning the different character traits, the Modesto City Schools' character traits. We're proud of that, continuing that tradition. Our schools engage in, many call it a recess rodeo. Some schools have another creative name for it, but it's where, where we really teach students the behavior expectations, not only out at recess, but also as we transition from one room to another, one location from another, and in the cafeteria. And again, students are explicitly taught those behaviors. And as you know, we also have our Student Assistance Specialists who support students who need a higher level of social emotional support, whether that be in goal setting, addressing low levels of anxiety or sadness, those types of things to support their social emotional levels. At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Tony Lameli, and he's going to share information with you about our before and after-school programs.
Good evening. I'm just here to share one slide today. So first of all, this is our first year of the implementation of before-school programs, and really, we got off to a good start this year. All our schools started on day one, offering services to all our students at all our elementary schools, starting at seven AM this day, this year. So really excited about that. In our first year of implementation, we were able to serve seven hundred and eighty-five students through our programming, and we've already surpassed that number this year to start the year. So we're excited about the support and that we're being out there to support these families so that families that are getting back to work or re-engaging in the workforce have this support in the mornings. Secondly, we're continuing to expand our services in the after-school program and providing additional access. This past year, we served over three thousand students, which was a huge increase from the pandemic years. So more and more students are enrolling, so an increase of over seventeen hundred students participated in our after-school programs on a daily basis. And then lastly, a very important thing that I partnered with Ms. Hinkle too and, and aligned with what we do in MTSS is supporting our kids after-school in ELA through our RISE program, which is our Rigorous Intervention for Student Excellence Program. This past year, it focused on reading and ELA focus, and we were able to serve over a thousand students and support the student. That's over four hundred more students than the years past. So we're very excited about that and excited about expanding that to other, other subjects like math and English learners. I will now turn it over to my esteemed colleague, Ernesto Calderon.
All right, good evening. We know teachers have the largest impact on student achievement, and supporting teachers in the classroom through job-embedded coaching continues to be a goal of ours during the 2021, 2022 school year. Last year, seven coaches were dedicated to supporting the TK6 sites in English Language Arts. We continue to provide classroom teachers with job-embedded coaching opportunities because we know it is effective in increasing student outcomes. ELA coaches provided support in the form of nine hundred and sixty-two coaching events throughout the year, which included supporting teachers through lesson design, data analysis, demo lessons, supporting with curriculum assessments, lesson planning, and classroom management. Although both ELA and mathematics are critical due to our contract with SWAN and our embedded monthly coaching they provide, we canceled more ELA coaching support sessions due to sub-sur shortages than we did in math. ELA coaches frequently substitute taught in classrooms along with other job-embedded coaches in an effort to keep schools open during the pandemic. In addition to coaching in the classrooms, we also provide, pride ourselves in the quality of professional development we provide to our teachers and staff, which ultimately supports scholars and families. The majority of the professional development opportunities we offered focused on the language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, or letters, which provides teachers with professional learning on the science of reading. The teachers we targeted, including TK through third grade and all special education teachers. We also provided professional development on phonemic awareness and phonics, tandem teaching support in grades TK through three. We also provided professional development in vocabulary, so to continue the continuum in grades three, and critical reading routine and tandem teaching to support our fourth through sixth teachers. And now to provide information on student support in the area of mathematics is my colleague, Dr. Sarah Olson, Senior Director, CIPD.
Good evening. Last year, four coaches were dedicated to TK through sixth-grade math coaching. Modesto City Schools' math coaches provided over thirty-seven hundred coaching events throughout the year, which included support on lesson design, data analysis, demonstration lessons, support with curriculum, assessments, lesson delivery, and classroom management. The majority of professional development opportunities focused on addressing teachers' needs in the classroom through job-embedded instructional coaching, which limited the amount of time teachers were out of the classroom, as well as gave concrete strategies with their own students to guide student learning. Monthly SWAN coaching was also provided to all TK through sixth-grade sites and teachers, working alongside our Modesto City Schools' math team. This has helped to build our coaching staff for sustainability as we continue with SWAN beyond the SWAN coaching opportunities. Our next steps for student support include supporting best practices in the areas we discussed this evening. For MTSS, we sent coaches to a direct instruction coaching institute this summer to develop and refine their instructional coaching skills. We will continue professional development for administrators, instructional coaches, teachers, and paraprofessionals. Our coaches and administrators will support teachers and paraprofessionals with effective feedback to refine their delivery of programs, and coaches will offer side-by-side coaching. Additionally, teachers will engage in ongoing progress monitoring of student performance. In our before and after-school programs, we will continue to expand access and support for students. We will expand academic supports for English learners and students with disabilities. We are excited to expand the RISE program to include math support for struggling learners. Job-embedded coaching support will continue with a focus on supporting all students with an emphasis on integrated English language development and inclusion. We will continue our focus on high-quality professional development, providing opportunities to focus on the instructional core, and continue to offer professional development in the science of reading for teachers and administrators through our letters training that Mr. Calderon spoke of. Over the past several years, we have focused on ways to strategically help elementary schools provide effective Tier 1 instruction and interventions. Our next steps are to continue to refine our work in these areas to provide continued growth. This time, we would like to offer time for questions or comments from the board.
Thank you very much to everyone for this report. I'm going to take it out to the public, see if there's any questions coming from the public. And then I'll bring it back to our board members. I have a couple of lights. We'll start with Trustee Majestas.
Thank you. So I appreciate, one, all of the hard work that everyone's been doing for the supports that we have, both for teachers and students in our district, from the coaches to the admin, to all of the people supporting them. I appreciate all of that work everybody's doing. So that's the first thing I want to say. Second, I also appreciate that the next steps include the math support in RISE. And I want to ask, does the continued growth also include some sort of math intervention within the school day for, for kids that can't make before, after, for some reason? Because we have, we do, I mean, looking to our next report later on, we definitely have growth in that area that we need to make. And so is there plans on expanding that, that MTSS time to some mathematics?
I'll, I'll chime in on that, or I'll attempt to chime in on that. First, I want to share that when we first developed the Modesto City Schools' MTSS model, it really was focused on data a number of years ago. And at that time, we really needed an accelerated opportunity for students in the area of reading at that time. As, also, as we're well aware, in the, in the past several years, we've had an intense focus with the shift to the SWAN curriculum, as well as the SWAN coaching support to really ramp up and fine-tune our Tier 1 instruction in math. With that said, we absolutely recognize that there is a need for math intervention during the school day. As you're probably well aware, we are challenged with instructional minutes and figuring out and determining where that will fit in really is going to be our task at hand. And so we know it's a need. Mr. Rich and I have had some very engaging conversations about how can we make it happen for math as well? And so we know that's a direction that we need to go. With that, I am happy that we are expanding RISE to include math. I know that Mr. Lameli is working with the math team as well as our SWAN consultants, so that there is some alignment there with the supports that we are able to offer after-school.
Thank you very much. Trustee Wes.
Thank you, Ms. Hinkle and everyone, for this great report. I want to say how lucky we are in this district to be able to offer before and after-school programs for our children, for our working parents. I know that a lot of districts don't offer this. My, my own daughter, my kid, my, one of my grandchildren started kindergarten this year, not our district, a different district, and their district does not offer before-school program. And so my daughter struggles with finding out how she's going to get to work and get the five-year-old to kindergarten. And it's been a real struggle. And so I feel super fortunate that our district does offer that because it's such a need for many of our parents. And I'm curious to know, are we able to cover all of the requests from parents for before and after-school? Or do we ever have wait lists for those programs?
So for before-school programs, we do not have a wait list. And then this year, we've really taken it upon ourselves to engage all the families. So in the past years, you know, our after-school programs were looked at as five-day programs, correct? So we're really looking at the kids and figuring out and diversifying how we serve kids. So if, we're also very popular, so, especially in the after-school program. So instead of our, my, our view is, as we look forward, if we have kids and we currently don't have space and stuff, we try to fit their needs. And it could be a two-day RISE program, it could be some other need. So our, our coordinators are tasked with being innovative and exploring these options. The ultimate goal is to have enough staffing for every kid to be there five days a week, and we'll get there. But in the meantime, we'll work with our good partners, Police Activity League, our new partner this last year, Boys and Girls Club in City of Modesto, to, to provide our staffing needs, but also working with our partners, MTA and CSCA, as we're looking to explore and, and making a lot of our staff members, full-time staff members, so that we can continue to add kids.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President Brown.
Yes, on our PowerPoint copy that we have on page three, there's a chart that shows the percentage of growth and the percentage of growth from twenty to twenty-one. I'm, I'm wondering if you can help me understand those percentages and what the difference is between the two columns? Because I've got a question specific to third grade.
Absolutely. So let me try to explain it and we'll see if it makes sense to you. So as the year progresses, students have targets to meet in their reading fluency assessments, which are part of the DIBELS. As you might imagine, that target gets greater and greater as the year goes on because our expectation is that students will learn and be able to read better as the year goes on. In the prior year, in the 2021 school year, as students progressed through the years, we actually had more students in the below basic ranges than at the beginning of the year, which meant that we were not doing a good enough job at accelerating their reading enough so that they were hitting the end-of-year targets. Therefore, that's why you see we had an annual growth last year of fourteen percent, which was eighteen percent greater than the year before. That's because the year before, they slid backwards, so to speak. They had more kids in the below basic range. I hope that makes sense.
It does.
So it's that, that same logic for each of the grade levels.
Okay, so that, that takes me down to third grade. I see great progress in our kinder in first grades. And that, to me, is really promising because those kids are going to move on. And that progress carries with them from year to year. So third grade seems to be the target, and it's the one that we've been told forever is our, our measurement tool of student success. And I'm, I'm a little concerned that we don't see the same kind of percentages as we get to third grade that we saw in to third grade that we saw in kinder and first grade. And is there any hope or explanation you can give me there? And what can we do to really enforce and strengthen the ranks of those kids who are destined to succeed?
Right. So as mentioned previously, it's all about moving as many kids as we can out of the below-basic ranges, okay? I will, I will share that at our kindergarten and first-grade levels, as you might imagine, we have a higher percentage of kids in that below-basic range when we start the year. And so because there are more kids in that lower, below-basic range, we see higher percentages moving out than in the third grade, where we don't see as many students starting off the year in that below-basic range. Yes, we're making growth. The percentages don't look as great, because we didn't have as many there to begin with. Absolutely, third grade is a focus. And would I love to see, you know, eighteen, nineteen percent compared to the year prior? Absolutely. We didn't get there with third grade, but trust in knowing that we have fewer kids in that below-basic range in the third grade when we start the beginning of the year.
Great. I'm glad to see that we're green in every one of those boxes, so that tells me that we are definitely making progress.
Thank you.
And I understand that better. Thank you.
I have a follow-up to that, because I see it as, when I was looking at this, is like, out of our, out of our base of students that are in that area at the beginning of the year, seven percent, or there was a seventeen percent increase from those, from those students. So this is that large, this is that large student body as compared to, just looking at, just looking at the students that are in this, in this area of, that need to move out of that, that.
Below basic.
Below basic, sorry. Does that make sense? So we're not looking at this as just kids that are below, below basic, or we're looking at the whole student body, and then this is how we end up with seven percent. So as opposed to saying, okay, out of the fifty students that were in, that were in need of, you know, more support, we only had a seven percent increase.
So let me see if I can clarify that for you. So Mr. Calderon and Dr. Olson, well, mostly Mr. Calderon, talked about some of our job-embedded coaching opportunities, and one of those was the review of data. And in that vein, they are looking at data for all students, not just students in the below-basic range. And they're developing instructional targets, lessons, et cetera, to address each student's individual level, to move all students up. MTSS, that dedicated block of extra reading time, and sometimes two extra blocks of reading time to double-dose kiddos, is, while it supports all students at their level, our goal with that is to help the most struggling learners. So the data that we shared with you in that chart is focused on how many or what percentage of kids we moved out of the below-basic range. In our next presentation, when we look at the academic achievement of students, you're going to see the other end of that, you know, the percentage of the students on CASP who are meeting and exceeding standards on that assessment. So that'll give you perhaps a more broad picture of all students and how they performed.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was getting, I wanted to get a more, a better understanding of which, what population of students were we looking at here, right?
So the data is representative of all students, like, we assess all students, but the data is showing the percentage that we moved out of the below-basic ranges. We assess all students, though.
Okay, so when you talk about seven percent, you're talking about, out of all the students, is seven percent of our students went out of that below-basic area?
Out of all the students that started the year in the below-basic range, that's the percentage that we were able to move out of the below-basic range by the end of the year.
Okay, so when, when Vice President Brown mentions that seven percent, so we are seeing less of a growth in that area as opposed to other ones, but we're, because you mentioned, we have a smaller size of students that are in below basic. So does that mean that there is indeed just a smaller percent of growth as opposed to the other ones, or is it because there's a smaller percent of students, there's a smaller percent of growth?
So there, there is a smaller number of students, starting out in the below-basic range in the third grade, but also, to answer your question, we saw a lower percentage of students moving out of that range. Do we want to see it as high as K1? Absolutely. So I think with our effective coaching support that we're providing to our instructional coaches and our ongoing professional development, where we tighten up our practices and continue to monitor the data, of course, our goal is to have all students making those high-level, double-digit, you know, movement out of the below-basic range.
Thank you. So let me, do we have a question from our student rep, or just?
Both.
Okay, we'll start with student rep, and then we'll go to Trustee Mejia.
I would just like to thank you guys for giving this really informative presentation about the social-emotional learning and the student support. I think it's really great that students in elementary school are learning about growth, growth mindset, goal-setting, emotional management, empathy and kindness, and problem-solving at an early age. But I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm curious about which part of the curriculum that students are learning this in elementary schools, and if there is any room in this section of social-emotional learning to maybe add in or fit in, or maybe if they are currently learning, any sort of like mental health, sort of, like, type of learning, if they're learning what it is, if they're learning how to deal with it, and just to de-stigmatize the connotation around mental health as they grow older.
I would add that with the second-step curriculum, it's not, the way the lessons are structured, it's not specifically on what you mentioned, on de-stigmatizing mental health support. But with that said, students are well-informed when there are trouble areas or areas where they feel they need additional help, maybe anxiety or sadness, that we do have staff on campus, and to say, you know, that students can go to any adult when they're feeling that way to receive additional support, or to be pointed in the right direction for that support.
Thank you very much. Trustee Mejia, and then we have a following comment. Oh, Trustee Mejia. Well, first of all, thank you. Definitely have seen all the, have seen these programs and how successful they could be, some of those interventions. So I just have a, appreciate all that work on that front. Always my mind goes to, on page three, sixteen out of twenty-two, so I'm just, my question is around, are we doing specific interventions to some of those schools that did not make the list of the sixteen more intentionally? What are we doing with those schools? Because if I'm reading it right, I'm sixteen out of twenty-two. I wanted to just get some clarity, you know, are we doing anything special for those schools that are gonna, that are not, that didn't make the sixteen growth from basic to?
So you're jumping ahead, so the next presentation, we actually identify in English and in math, the four schools that both in English and math did not grow, and then ELA, there was actually five. We have specific interventions for that four or five schools, depending upon what they needed. So they'll talk, there is actually a slide devoted to that, at least, that's what I remember.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for everyone. It's, it's great to see that we're improving and we're growing. Like we mentioned before, and I think Dr. Naguchi mentioned, you know, we're not where we want to be, and that, that's okay, but we know there's, there's, we're moving forward, which is also a good place to be at, yeah? So thank you for all your, for all your help and support, and then for your report this evening. Thank you very much. And we'll be moving on to B4. This is a report on TK six student achievement data, 2021-2022 school year. Mr. Rich.
Thank you. Good evening. We're excited to report tonight the progress that our K6 students have made last year as measured on mainly our CASP assessments. You're going to hear from two of our new senior directors in CIPD, who you just heard from, so Dr. Sarah Olson, and kicking it off will be Mr. Ernesto Calderon, as well as a familiar face, Ms. Mota, who will be presenting on this one. So we're excited to hear from the team. Ernesto.
All righty. So good evening again, Board President Lopez, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Naguchi, Cabinet, and members of the public. My name is Ernesto Calderon, Senior Director and Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development. Tonight, my colleagues and I will be presenting on the TK six student achievement data for the 2021-2022 school year. And as this is another presentation by your crew, we will introduce our colleagues as they come up to the podium. So tonight's report, sorry about that. So again, our purpose tonight is to report on the TK six student achievement data for the 2021-2022 school year, including CASP results in English Language Arts and Math, and the Summit of LPEC results in reclassification data. You've already heard about the multi-tier systems of support in the previous presentation. So tonight's report directly aligns to District Goal Number One, increasing academic achievement and ensuring equitable access to enable all students to attain college and career readiness. We will begin tonight by reporting on the 2021-2022 English Language Arts and Math CASP data. Before we present this data, I'd like to remind you that in 2019-2020, the CASP assessment was canceled due to the schools shutting down in March of 2020 due to the pandemic. In the 2020-2021 school years, school districts had a choice to assess students on the CASP or any other assessment determined by the district. MCS decided to continue to assess students' learning through the CASP assessment. In the 2021-2022 school years, all students again took the CASP and MCS, as we wanted to use the best data source available, and we wanted a baseline for the coming years. We are excited to report growth in both ELA and Math for the 2021-2021 two school year. Tonight, the charts you will see are the percent change from the prior year of students who met or exceeded standards on the CASP. In Math, we saw a percent change of four-point-four percent increase from the previous year. And in English Language Arts, we saw a percent change of two-point-nine percent increase from the previous year. In English Language Arts, all but five schools showed increase in the CASP from the previous year. In this chart, the schools are ranked from the highest percent change to the lowest percent change. The schools identified in green showed increase, while the schools identified in red showed a decrease. As you see, John Meere, Beard, and Ansland Elementary, the percent change was over ten percent, which is significant increase from the prior year, and we should, then the school site should be recognized and celebrated for this growth. We are also excited to report that all of our student groups showed growth in the CASP in English Language Arts and percent change from the previous school year, including our English learners, our reclassified fluent English proficient scholars, our students with disabilities, and our white, Hispanic, and African-American student groups. Based on this data, we will continue to focus on supporting teachers with job-embedded coaching support in the classroom, and providing high-quality professional development within and outside of the school day. We will also provide targeted supports to those sites that did not demonstrate growth in the CASP by prioritizing site support with coaching and professional development. And now to provide information on student achievement data in the area of mathematics is my colleague, Dr. Sarah Olson.
In the area of mathematics, eighteen of twenty-two schools showed growth on the CASP from the previous year. In this chart, the schools are ranked from the highest percentage change to the lowest. The schools identified in green showed increases, while the schools in red showed decreases. As you can see, both Beard and El Vista Elementary Schools had growth of more than ten percent of students meeting or exceeding the state standards. This is also a significant increase from the previous year, and those sites deserve to be celebrated. We're also excited to report that all of our student groups showed growth in the CASP in percent change from the previous year, including English learners, students who reclassified as fluent English proficient, students with disabilities, and our white, Hispanic, and African-American student groups. Based on this data, we will have a continued focus on supporting teachers with job-embedded instructional coaching support in the classroom, providing high-quality professional development within and outside of the school day, and continuing with SWAN math coaching opportunities. We will also provide targeted support to those sites that did not demonstrate growth on the CASP by prioritizing site support with instructional coaching and professional development. I would now like to introduce Marisa Lamota, Director Two of English Learner Services, to go over LPEC and RFEPP data.
It's in honor of Spanish heritage, Hispanic heritage, I wanted to, there are a little bit of Spanish in there for you, but thank you for having me again. It's been, it's always a pleasure to present to the board. So I am Marisa Lamota, and I will be presenting on 2122 Summit of LPEC and reclassification data for the last school year. So just as a reminder, what is Summit of LPEC, and what's the purpose? The purpose of Summit of LPEC is to measure a student's progress in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, so their written and oral proficiencies. English learners take this assessment every year, and this is the test that determines if they're making progress or not. It's also one of the measures to reclassify our students. So in the chart here, you can see nineteen, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-two school data. Unlike CASP in nineteen, twenty, Summit of LPEC had started but was paused, so we do have some data. It's not fully complete data, but it is the data that we have, so I wanted to note on that. In 2021, we continued to assess students. If you recall, that year is where all of our students were either at school or at home, but we brought all our students in for Summit of LPEC. And then last year, we were a little bit more normalized, so our students were at home, and we did continue to test our students. But I want to point out that this, the Modesto City Elementary School District includes our K8 students, so if the numbers don't add up, it's because seven and eight are also included that in those numbers. And then, as you can see in kinder through sixth grade, that's the data for our K6 students. It's a good data report, because it gives us an opportunity to focus on specific grades, and then also to dive deeper into our data and analyze which areas of focus we need for our English learners. So here, following CASP, we have the schools that made biggest and not-so-big percent change from 2021 and 2122. Some, some schools that made growth were Robertson Road, Martone, Kirsten and Everett, and Franklin. Others that did not make as much growth are Garrison, Marshall, Shackleford, Lakewood. Lakewood, I know, looks like it's a really big number, but they also only have less than twenty-five students, so any change in that, it becomes a positive or negative big-impact growth. So just wanted to point that out. So next, we're going to go over our reclassification data. Before I go over the data, I want to remind you of the law. So it is a requirement to have four criteria. The first criteria is the LPEC score of four, so our students must score a four. Then we have a standardized assessment for our K6 students. It's the DIBELS and CASP data that we use to reclassify our students. And then the teach, for teacher evaluation of student progress, it's our report cards for ELA, and the students need to have twos or more. And then lastly, if they meet all the criteria, the parent consultation is where we bring parents in, and they have the last say. So this is our reclassification data, and I just want to point out, every time I do Summit of LPEC and reclassification data together, you want to connect it naturally, but I just want to share that there are actually two data points. So Summit of LPEC data was last year's score, where reclassification data that I'm going to discuss in 2122, we actually used the prior year's data, which is 2021 data, to reclassify our students in 2122. So I just want to make that point clear, because you'll probably want to connect them, and they're not connected, because we used the prior year's data. So in nineteen, twenty, this is when the state went to an LPEC score of four. We had four-hundred-and-thirty students roughly, and we reclassified about six-point-eight percent. So this is prior to COVID, right? We used the eighteen-nineteen data. Then we dropped, due to COVID, to two-point-eight, and now we're seeing an increased amount to three-point-eight, which was a one percent. It's not where we want to be, but it's a start. So we increased from a hundred-and-eighteen students that we reclassified in 2021 to a hundred-and-sixty-six students in K6 for last year. Again, this is our reclassification data for the change, the percent change for our students. Again, I'll point out Martone, Fremont, Fairview, Burbank, were some of the schools that had the biggest percent change of reclassification. And then some of the ones that had the least, or not as much movement, were Robertson Road, Kirsten, Twalomee, Marshall. There is an asterisk in Twalomee, because that included seventh-grade data, just because they moved to a K-seventh school. So what are our next steps after seeing all the So what are our next steps after seeing all this data? Well, we're going to focus on instructional course specifically on the graphic that you have there, supporting all students' board adopted curriculum and engaging all students using language and literacy through listening, speaking, reading, and writing. We're going to focus on high-quality professional development, job embedded coaching, and then providing direct support for teachers and administrators. This includes our data supports. In order to move forward, we need to analyze our data and see where our achievements are so that we don't focus on that and look at where are our gaps so we can do targeted interventions for our students, specifically for our English learners. Any questions?
Thank you very much to all of our presenters. I'll take it out to the public. Is there anyone that has questions or comments on this report? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to our board members. Give everyone a second to push on their lights. All right, we'll start off with Trustee Maestas.
You sure you want to start off with me? I'm just kidding. It's a lot of data to look through. And you know how I love to look through data. Okay, so first question. The DIBELS assessment, how measurable is that DIBELS assessment to the CASP? Is there anything that they, do they line up, or are they just two separate assessments that we look at separately?
Although we do look at them separately, there are some correlations specifically. When you get to the younger grades, really focuses on the phonemic awareness and the phonics. And then we move into the vocabulary and the reading comprehension, the fluency and the reading comprehension. So there is a correlation between the two. But although we do look, for example, when we're targeting interventions, we're looking at DIBELS data and we're looking at CASP data to determine what sites we want to focus and prioritize first. So it's not only looking at the CASP data, we're also looking at DIBELS and seeing, okay, so what sites really need support based on those two and determining how we're going to prioritize support to the sites.
The reason I ask is because in the previous presentation, there was a 7% growth from the students that were outside, that were in the not met standards in third grade. But we only saw a 4% increase when we did in the CASP. So it'd be nice to have those closer together, although 7% and 4% really isn't that far apart. But I just wanted to know how they stacked up to see if DIBELS is what we're using to kind of tell us, well, how are the kids getting there? If they're separate assessments, that's fine, too. Any multiple measures of assessments that we have to measure students on their growth is better than just one. I think that's the point I'm trying to make. If we're using something to predict or we're using multiple measures, that's what my question is.
Let me ask clarifying, just so I'm clear. So the first presentation with DIBELS is measuring students that are moving out of below basic. The CASP is looking at meets or exceeds. So that, so it's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Like, I'm just saying that we're not using DIBELS to predict what's happening. If we're using it as a multiple-measured assessment to see more of what the student can accomplish than just one test.
Right, and then we also look at DIBELS to prioritize our coaching. Like I mentioned, our sites that need support with phonemic awareness and phonics in the primary grades, in vocabulary assistance in third grade, and then fluency and reading comprehension through our critical reading routine in grades three through six. So we're really using it with our coaches to dive through the data and then our sites through the great system that we're implementing in the elementary sites. Really looking at it in October, our meetings are going to focus solely on DIBELS assessments results and what the sites can do to support their teachers in moving their scholars forward.
Yeah, and the reason I ask this, I mean, I guess I'm coming back to the same thing. I asked a little, I had this note a little earlier. Is there something like DIBELS for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade? It's really, the question I have for that is really, I just want to tell you where it's coming from, is I don't ever like to take one piece of evidence to tell me the story of the kids. So two pieces is a bit better. So if we had something else other than the fourth grade, just the CASP, and something else that we can say, oh, how are our kids doing and exceeding or growing, that would be nice to see.
So actually, you will be able to see that in the future because DIBELS is now expanded through fourth through sixth grade. We bought a license for fourth through sixth grade. Doesn't mean every teacher is going to assess it in fourth or sixth grade. But currently, our data indicates that the majority of our fourth through sixth grade teachers have actually already assessed using DIBELS in fourth through sixth grade. So we had a big push for it this year. We trained a significant amount of teachers, and there were actually our completion reports, even though the DIBELS window closes on Friday. We already have completion reports that we're monitoring, and our fourth through sixth grade teachers are at a lot of our sites, 100% of the teachers are doing it, and some sites 50%. So we're actually waiting until Friday, but we have a significant amount of teachers that are bought into and are using DIBELS to support scholars in grades TK through six now.
Perfect, thank you. I got more questions, so. They asked, I only have one more, I think. I thank you for all of these data, by the way. Is there, so I know we keep saying like, we're not where we are, right? It is great to see all of this growth from, it shows, I don't speak for everyone, but it shows me how much we are working to crawl out of the pandemic, the hurt that the pandemic caused our students in all of our supports that we give them and SEL and also in our scores, right? We're crawling out of that hole. We're not where we were beforehand based on this data, so we have some room to grow to get back to where we were before. I am curious, do we have, and you can send this out of board communication, be fine. What's the statewide year-one, one-year change in math and ELA?
Yeah, so the state has not yet released that data, so we don't have that.
Okay, so we'll get that when we get there.
I believe January, they pushed it back. Yeah, so I suspect we'll see a similar pattern on still trying to dig out of a hole.
I just want to be above the county.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to grow. Growth every year is what we look for. And there was one school on here that I wanted to point out that grew even from 1819. I think it was Marshall. Was that one? I think there was, there's actually a couple that grew from 1819 into 2122. That shows a lot of improvement from just like even before the pandemic.
Right, so in ELA, we had growth from 1819 to 2122 was John Muir, Shaq, Garrison, Fremont, Brett Hart, and Twalome, which stayed the same. So we had some sites that have already moved or passed the 1819 school year in ELA.
That's great accomplishment for those schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee, sorry, Vice President Brown.
Yes, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and all the analysis that happens with this data that helps us understand how we're doing with different groups of students. I was particularly interested in looking at the ELA and the math achievement with CASP in various student groups. And to me, one number just jumped out really strongly, and that is supporting all the emphasis that our district places on reclassification and helping our students become proficient in the English language. And it's obvious to me that when they're proficient in English, they're going to do well in their reading. They're going to do well in their language efforts, and they're going to do well in math. So the strongest student groups that made, or the most progress was made in our reclassified fluent English students. So that, to me, is, it just reinforces every effort that's happening there in this reclassification process. And it's great to see the highest progress among all student groups, among those students. We've taught them how to learn English. We've given them the confidence that they can do well, and that seems to be the answer to a lot of our challenges that we have faced as a district. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Mejia.
Yeah, well, thank you. That answered a lot of the questions in terms of what are you going to do with the schools. I do have a couple comments. I was in the same line as President Brown. I saw that reclassification is super awesome, and I think the kids get motivated when they say, how reclassified? It becomes, I know it's a big deal. So, and in that note, I know you're probably already doing it, but maybe make an emphasis because I know when this test comes around, these kids don't take it as serious as maybe they should be taking it, but maybe making like a bigger deal when it comes to, maybe like a week prior or weekend prior to that. Make it almost like a party type of thing. We're having this thing. Making a big deal, and also including the parents in that, kind of like the preparation. Because I do feel one of the biggest things, it's not that the kids aren't capable. I don't think they take it as serious as they should be taking it when it comes to taking that test. And then also noticing that they don't just have to pass that because there's, I get parents, oh, I got four. Yeah, but there's other things, and I feel like the other things also bring them down if they don't know before that that's going to be part of the equation. So just, I feel like celebratory because it just shows as soon as they're classified or getting close, their numbers go up to the roof. So if we can capitalize on that, I think it might make, this is just my comment. And just congratulating on the numbers so far, and I feel like it's going to continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I would echo that. I think it's important. You know, a lot of times when we have our at-large test, you know, they're a big thing. They, you know, we prep for them. I remember when it was, what was it, KC or SATs or STARS? It was a big, you know, you prep, that was the All-Star week, right? And so you kind of kept it light the week before. You kind of, you know, on the end, the week after, you kind of kept it light. You know, it's kind of celebrating. You got through that. So I think for our reclassification, we need to do the same. We need to echo it more. And it's an important thing because, you know, it will allow them to open up a lot more doors. So I think it should have that kind of same importance at the school, you know, overall level, right? Oh, we have a comment or a question from our student rep, Atelle.
Thank you for this presentation. It was really informative. I just wanted to quickly clarify, for the ELA achievement, and I believe on the math achievement as well for the CASP, for the targeted supports on prioritizing site support based on site's greater need, what exactly would that look like? And is there some sort of plan to achieve that? And then also on next steps for the instructional core, how does this directly translate into the classroom for both students and teachers?
So prioritizing for the sites, again, we're looking at CASP data and we're looking at DIBELS data to determine which sites made the least amount of growth and in what grade level. So then we're reaching out with the job embedded coaches in ELA, at least. We're reaching out to the administrators and finding out, okay, so which grade levels really struggled or are struggling? And how can we provide that direct assistance to your sites? And again, it all goes back to becoming a proficient reader. It goes through stages. So the stages are phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and reading comprehension. So it depends on the grade level, the ability of the scholars is when we decide what targeted professional development are we going to provide that classroom? If it's a TK2, we're most likely going to be offering phonemic awareness and phonics so they can get the sounds that they need proficient with the sounds. If it's a third-grade classroom, we focus on either vocabulary and fluency, which we really push. And then if it's the upper grades, we've really started pushing our critical reading routine, which really focuses on strength in fluency, stamina, and reading comprehension. And we have our coaches going out doing four and five days, three, four, or five-day cycles, depending on the need of the site in order of like a gradual release of responsibility. They start with the coach modeling, the teacher watching day one, and it's five, four, three, four, or five consecutive days. And then we gradually release the responsibility to the teacher. So by the end, the teacher is doing all the work and being supported by the coach. So that's kind of, that's the professional development that we provide, and we look at the data to determine what sites, and not only the sites, but again, what grade levels within that site are needing that assistance, and we're working on a plan to go attack that in a sense.
And whoops. For the math achievement, targeting based on site need, we're looking at, in addition to CASP data, we're looking at SWAN diagnostic data that all of our students have just recently completed, all of those beginning-of-the-year assessments. We're using those results. Our instructional coaches and our teachers are looking at the results and identifying students who have the greatest needs so that we can better target and focus to meet those needs. We are also with Mr. Lamelli's, well, we're working with Mr. Lamelli to bring in a RISE math program for after-school support for students, utilizing, again, a lot of that data to support those students and really target their greatest need. To answer your question about connection to the instructional cord, core, we are using our board adopted curriculum during the regular school day, but also partnering with SWAN Math to support all of our students who are participating in RISE Math so that we have that continuation of learning that extends after school as well as an emphasis on students listening, speaking, reading, and writing in math.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you very much for this report and for all the support you're giving our students. And, you know, like we mentioned before, there's a lot of great progress and, you know, that's good to see, and we appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll be moving on to B5, which is the approval of the unaudited financial statement for 2021-2022. Mr. Zerli.
Thank you. Good evening, President Lopez, trustees. Tonight, we present to you for approval the 2122 unaudited actuals financial report, comparison between estimated actuals and unaudited actuals, and then budget changes since June budget adoption. Tonight, we have with us Michelle Price and Kim Campstra. They're in the audience in the back. We have over $500 million in expenditures across all funds in the district. And it's what you see tonight before you for approval is put together by those two ladies and the staffs that they have. About a month and a half ago, two months ago, when we started this process, we had a resignation from one of our accounting supervisors. And so these two have been down a staff member all summer in preparation for this report. So I just want to thank them for their efforts in getting this done tonight. This particular presentation and report aligns with our strategic goal four, which is ensuring the district is fiscally and operationally sound. Unaudited actuals is an annual statement, and the only time of the year we utilize what we term in accounting as a full accrual accounting methodology. Throughout the year, we give you budget updates. You get monthly budget reports. And so now, this is the one and only time that we look like a financial statement. And so what you see in front of you is our snapshot of our unrestricted general fund balance. And we always show unrestricted general fund balance because these are dollars that we have discretion over to spend. And the restricted dollars are part of the official document, but those are given to us with specific restrictions to them and cannot be used for anything other than what they've been provided to us for. So we have a small decrease in the ending fund balance of $1.3 million on the unrestricted general fund balance at unaudited actuals as compared to our estimated actuals. And we'll go over what that variance is for. And the first thing we look at is our general fund revenues for the unrestricted budget. And we have less than a 1% variance from our estimated actuals. So the last time that we projected this to now. But it does require some individual explanation that you see listed below. The Local Control Funding Formula Average Daily Attendance Yield Adjustment is from the State Budget Act, and that allows us to utilize the 2019-2020 absence rates. So these are pre-COVID attendance rates for attendance rates, um, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um, so we're not penalized for COVID-related absences. Uh, that was signed, if you recall, that was signed by the governor in, in July. We did not know that at the time we did our estimated actuals, um, and it did go back a year. Um, it's not only for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, um, but it does go back. And so we're very fortunate that we added, um, five million dollars, um, to our local control funding formula calculation, um, based on a higher attendance, uh, yield percentage. A small adjustment, um, we, we see this annually for unrestricted lottery, um, point seven million dollars, or seven hundred thousand. And then, um, the next one is a nine million dollar adjustment for county cash fair market value. This one's a little more complicated to explain, uh, and this amount, uh, for an accrual is extremely rare. Um, the county treasurer holds all of our cash, uh, for not only our district, but all the county school districts, uh, and invests the cash, uh, in accordance with government code standards. As of June thirtieth, um, we were provided with the fair market value of our cash on hand in the county treasury, adjusted for current investments. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, our fair market value is below, um, what is being invested, and we're required to record the amount. Um, now this is, again, this is one of those frustrating, uh, accounting entries that we have, um, and it's, it's handed to us by the governmental accounting standards board, um, GASB thirty-one, to be exact, um, recognizes the fair market value of your cash investments. Prior to a couple years ago, there wasn't a requirement for us to record, um, the cash value, um, that has changed. However, we have done it as a district, um, every year, uh, and, and sometimes it's positive, sometimes it's negative, uh, but it has consistently been about the one million dollar range. Sometimes it's a, a million dollar plus, sometimes it's a million dollars taken away. If I go back and add up the plus and minuses over the last ten years, um, the difference is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, y, as you can see, it's, it's, it's barely negligible, um, year over year, ins and outs. To have a nine and a half million dollar adjustment, um, based on our cash, um, that's being invested i, is very rare. Um, and, um, we expect it to be readjusted, uh, it could be readjusted today if we, if we had new investment figures. This was as of June thirtieth. Um, it's one of those, it's one of those accounting, uh, adjustments that frustrates you, but I do have to share it, we have to disclose it. Um, and it, it could go the other way. So if it was a nine million dollar adjustment, which we would expect, um, in the coming year, my good friends in the audience, uh, labor partners with Mideslo Teacher Association, would want to know why we were holding back nine million dollars from them. Um, and rightfully so. This is just a, an adjustment that we have to make. Um, we have to make it, um, based on whatever the county tells us, um, i, is our investments. And just to put it in perspective, we have three hundred and twenty-five million dollars in cash on hand, um, at the county treasurer, uh, for all of our funds. Uh, and so, that doesn't mean if, if we were to ask for all of our cash today, we would get nine million dollars less. We would get three hundred and twenty-five million dollars, because that's what we have, cash on hand. This is just a paper adjustment. It's a, it's an accounting, um, uh, we have to do at the end of the year, because now we're on a full accrual accounting basis. The next up is our unrestricted general fund expenditures. Um, there's a, a nine million dollar difference, uh, in what we said we were going to spend, uh, in our budget versus what we actually spent. Um, and that's a three point two-nine percent variance. We like it to be under five percent. Um, and we, we're at three point two-nine percent. You can see the different areas, um, where we did not spend, um, what we had, what we had budgeted, um, in those, those various areas there. And then unrestricted general fund other uses. Um, the first line, eleven million dollars net change in transfers. These are transferred dollars to our facility fund for projects, uh, to be completed in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, this year, that are either already under construction or they will begin soon. Um, we could have waited until now to make this transfer, and it would have showed up at first interim. We decided, let's just do it, um, let's do it at unaudited actuals, uh, make the transfer for those projects that are either underway or will be underway, um, here shortly. And then you can see some, uh, small adjustments, uh, positive adjustments for what we thought we would have to contribute to routine restricted maintenance, um, half a million dollars. And then, um, to the credit of my good friend, Mark Herbst, um, we had a four million dollar reduction in what we thought we would need, uh, for our special education contributions. So, um, those are positives, um, to our, uh, our budgeted unrestricted, uh, other uses. And then here you can see all the other funds that we have. And, and I'm pleased to say and, and present to you that all of our other funds closed, um, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year with a positive ending fund balance. I do like to highlight and call out the cafeteria fund. Um, you can see the success we have under the leadership of Senior Director Chris Atwell, um, with our cafeteria fund, uh, closed the year with, um, uh, over ten and a half million dollars, um, in that account. Budget adjustments for the current year, um, these were approved, uh, on August fifteenth with the forty-five day revision. Um, we just show them, because now they show up on the SACH reports that you see, um, the detailed documents, uh, attached to the agenda item, uh, in the current year column. So, these are adjustments that are made. Um, again, we've, we've increased our, um, local control funding formula by thirty-four point seven million dollars based upon the State Budget Act. Uh, and then we have salary settlement agreements with Mideslo Teacher Association and management employees, um, increase in special ed contribution. Uh, that's because of the salary settlement that we have in the current year, and the increase in routine restricted maintenance contribution. At this point in time, staff is recommending approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two unaudited actuals financial report, uh, for all funds.
Thank you very much. Do I have any questions or comments from the public? Dean Nunn, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments, questions. Trustee Marks?
I have a question on, um, when we talked about the cafeteria fund, I know right now there's a bill before the legislature that is looking to, um, it has to do with, uh, food, local, buying locally the food. And there, the law will say that it has to be, um, bought locally instead of how we have been able to find areas where, let's just say it's peaches, and you can find them cheaper in somewhere else. And, and so I know, um, the nutrition department has worked really hard to reduce the cost. I didn't know if we've looked at, uh, to see, I'm thankful that the budget is going well in the nutrition department, but just how much that will impact us. Because I've been in two meetings, one with CSBA and one with CalSSD, and they both were very concerned about this and how it will affect, um, our local schools, um, actually just feeding our children. Because we feed a hundred percent of our children two meals a day, and that's a significant, it might be a significant hit on our budget. So, I don't know if we're watching that, or, I mean, you know?
Yes. And, and I know that during the pandemic, um, we have been fortunate enough to rely more on our local, um, our local products or producers for, um, nutrition services because of supply chain, uh, issues and shipping, uh, disruptions. Um, I, I know, um, and I, I'd have to get to dollar amounts, but, um, uh, Chris Atwell is very proud of what we're able to provide locally. I mean, we are, we are in the agricultural capital of, of the world, and, and so he's able to, um, get local produce. Um, uh, a, and, um, so I'm, I'm not sure if you're asking if, if we are, um, concerned about being in compliance with the, the, the law. Um, we are not. Um, we, we believe, um, that we have strong partnerships here locally, uh, and, um, not concerned, we don't believe there's going to be a cost increase, um, for having to, to utilize those partnerships that we're already utilizing as a result of the pandemic.
Well, that's good news, because I know a lot of other school districts were very concerned about how this bill was going to affect all of the school districts in California in different ways. So.
I will, um, check with Mr. Atwell and, and, um, provide an update.
Yeah, I didn't bring my notes to know what number it was, but, um, anyway, I know it's something that looks like the governor's probably going to sign it. So it's been something everybody's been watching. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Marks. Uh, Vice President Brown?
Yes, Mr. Zerly, on, um, what is, uh, I guess, slide number eight, the, the other funds summary. I noticed that the biggest reduction happens in our building fund. And to me, that, uh, appears that we're, uh, making lots of progress using funds, uh, towards, uh, building projects. Is that, uh, am I reading that right?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. So that, that appears to be a negative number, but that's a very positive when it talks of, uh, all the progress, uh, that we're making within the district.
If you're referring to the red net change, yes. I mean, we're, we're spending dollars that were set aside for projects, for facilities. So we, we want that to be red. We don't want the far-right column to be red, because they've spent too much, but, um.
Yeah, we, we still have a, a healthy, uh, balance there and, uh, will continue to make progress in that regard.
That is correct.
Good.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Dean Nunn, do I hear a motion to approve the unaudited financial statement for the year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two? I have a motion by Vice President Brown, and I had a second by trustee Mejia. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll start with student board rep, uh, Patel.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin? I'll come back to him at the end. Trustee Maestas?
Aye.
Trustee Marks?
Aye.
Trustee Mejia?
Aye.
Trustee Wes?
Aye.
Vice President Brown?
Aye.
President Lopez?
Aye.
Trustee Irvin? Okay, we'll try to see if he, if he's all, okay, but I'll go ahead and say motion carries six-two-zero. Okay, moving on to our final item of the evening is, uh, public notice to approve the waiver request of, of California Education Code forty-two, twenty-five, three point eleven, to some, to submit waiver to request the California Commission on Teacher Credentially. Mr. Henderson?
Yes. Good evening, Board President Lopez, trustees, Dr. Ngucci, and Cabinet. Item B six is a waiver request, uh, related to credentialing requirement for three certificated instructors as required by the Commission, uh, for teacher credentialing. In this case, it applies to three CTE teachers, um, who are proficient in their respective industries, but who don't yet have formal pedagogical training in instructing English learners. Upon approval, this waiver covers the requirement while they complete coursework as part of the process of clearing their respective credentials. We recommend that the board approve this item.
Thank you very much. Any questions from our, uh, from our public? Dean Nunn, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions from our board members. Dean Nunn, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the public notice to approve the waiver requests of California Education Code forty-two, twenty-five, three point eleven, to submit waiver requests to the California Commissions on Teacher Credentially? Moved by trustee Wes, seconded by trustee Marks. Uh, I'll make roll call again. Uh, student board rep, Patel?
Aye.
Trustee Maestas?
Aye.
Trustee Marks?
Aye.
Trustee Mejia?
Aye.
Trustee Wes?
Aye.
Vice President Brown?
Aye.
President Lopez?
Aye.
Trustee Irvin? Okay. Um, motion carries six-two-zero. And with that, uh, is there any items to be placed on future Board of Education agenda? Dean Nunn, do I hear a motion to adjourn this, uh, this meeting tonight? Moved by trustee Marks, seconded by trustee Mejia. We'll take a roll call on this item. Student board rep, Patel? Trustee Maestas?
Aye.
Trustee Marks?
Aye.
Trustee Mejia?
Aye.
Trustee Wes?
Aye.
Vice President Brown?
It's still too hot to go outside. Let's keep going. But aye, anyway.
I, I was just going to abstain on that. President Lopez, aye as well. Well, motion carries, uh, and good evening, everyone. We'll see you at, back here at, um, on September twenty-six at six P M. Meeting adjourned.